I'm gonna drink some water while I get a chance.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, December 13th. Uh, study set, we have public comments on study session related items. Seeing none, we'll start the discussion on strategic planning, high functioning boards, and goal setting.
I think the one gentleman would like to say something under.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you behind there. I'm sorry.
Please come on up. Thank you.
I'm Mark Anderson. I live here in Manistee, off Second Street. And I've been here about 12 years after I was, uh, right when I came and worked at the post office for a few years. And had my first stroke and so I'm, uh, now retired. But anyway, have, uh, my wife was checking on the thing called the PACE program. I don't know if y'all have heard of it. It is the, okay, where'd you go? Uh, it's a, well, it's a, dang it. There's usually disappear there. It is the Program of All-Inclusive Care for the Elderly, which is kinda through Medicare and Medicaid. And to where, you know, you get your care and it's, you can have it all paid through that rather than like now, I think the only thing in town other than your homes is, uh, to have, to have your care at, at a home, at, at your home, is Friends Who Care. And that is paid strictly through your pocket. You, it's key, they don't take insurance at all. And so anyway, we thought that this was all being put, set up four or five years ago. And my wife called and was looking around today and found out that no, nothing's been done. Traverse City has it, Luddington has it, everything around us has it, but not here. And we were just wondering why it hasn't been set up here. And we, you know, like I say, we did check the, uh, Friends Who Care and they charge like $28 an hour and take no insurance. It's strictly out of your pocket. Then we've, uh, called the Pace North, which is Traverse City. And they've got a nice thing set up where they pick people up, take a couple of times a week and they take them to their centers and, you know, help them out and have all full medical treatments and everything and just all kinds of stuff. We're just paid through, uh, like I say, it's paid through their Medicare and then if you're poor enough, you just pay through Medicaid and you don't pay anything up to like $10,000 almost, like eight, eight or nine thousand dollars. And of course, some of these numbers are wrong, but they're pretty close. Uh, and then there's one that's covered south of us, the Community Pace, it's called. And it's in Newago, Michigan. And they cover all the way up like to south of us, just, just south of us, just for some reason. Yet we're supposed to be included in that zip code. But anyway, there, we're not there. And then we checked with Representative Bergman's office and his clerk is going, or his, I guess his clerk would be, gonna be talking with him today and gonna be, get back with my wife tomorrow. But, and then Debbie Dingos was almost flabbergasted that we weren't connected yet with, with it. So.
And sir, hearing.
To hear from her soon too.
Sorry to interrupt you. Hearing what it's about, I think, um, I'll probably put you in kind of, I'll talk to HCBS. I think they probably through Rose Fostick, I can find out more about this program. I don't think it's necessarily a city program, but I think we can look through Human Services. So, but let me make sure I have your phone number correct and then we'll, we'll, I'll connect with you tomorrow.
Okay, though. And like I say, I've got Pace North right here that you can look up to.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize. I did see you sitting on the other side. Um, okay. Mary Riley, start.
Thank you. I'd just like to introduce Mary Riley and John Armrein. Uh, thank you for coming. They're gonna facilitate our goal setting strategic planning session today. So please come on up. Thank you.
Well, thanks for having me, everyone. My name's Mary Riley. I think I talked to a few of you on the phone. Yeah, I've talked to you on the phone. I am based here in Manistee. I work in the county building where the planning department is. And so I'm really happy to, to be of service, uh, to the city tonight. And my background is in planning and zoning more specifically, but I do, uh, help to facilitate these kinds of processes. And they're all a little bit different. So, um, Mr. Gamble approached us and, um, he's gonna kick us off with just kind of helping to review your mission and vision. And then John will give a presentation, uh, more on board roles, just to sort of whet your appetite on a, on a program that we have about exceptional boards. Uh, and then we'll kind of kick into that, this what I'm calling an annual goal setting activity. So, we'll kick it off.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
All right, Mr. Gamble.
So we've, I redid the, the poster with the new logo there, but, um, just wanted, I think, to take this opportunity to review our vision and mission. Um, I know when I met with, uh, new council member Pratt before he was elected, he kind of asked about the mission and vision. I thought this was a great time to, kinda go over it, see if we're still in line with these, if we wanna make any modifications. But, um, this is kinda what we currently have is our vision is Manistee is a safe and positive community to live, work, and play. Our mission to continue to enrich, to encourage a rich heritage of success in industry and business while continuing to enhance our vibrant residential character. And our purpose is to protect health, safety, and welfare of citizens in order that all may prosper and joy and partake in a vibrant waterfront community that many will be proud to call home. And so we kind of, these list of values, um, to help guide decisions involving governance of the city. So fairness and, fairness, integrity, honest and the highest ethical standards, commitment to community, to the community, tolerance, accessibility and approachability, respect, listening, responsiveness, leadership, trust, responsibility, universal access for people of all abilities. So there's a lot to take in, but I think, just wanted to kinda state that at the beginning of the, um, I think we're gonna come back to it at the end, but, um, while we have our discussions today about different topics, I think just kinda be able to, um, look back at these and see if this is kinda how we're rooted.
Are we not taking any comments on them at this point or no?
We can, yeah. If the council would like to.
I was just, um, seeing that our purpose says to, um, that many will be proud to call home. Why wouldn't we want all of them to be proud to call home? I think the word many implies that there's people that we don't want to be proud to call at our home, so I would.
It's a good point, yeah.
I'll be quiet now.
No, that's good.
Think in all possible ways, many can call home.
That's right.
Any other comments off the first, uh, look at this in a while? All right. Thanks, Jim.
Is it okay if I move around over here rather than standing right?
Yeah, you got a microphone. Why not?
Okay, great. Um, okay, so first slide, and I understand you have this on your monitors? Great, great. Um, we at MSU Extension really take pride and, and make a lot of effort to make sure that our programs are accessible to anybody who's, who's interested. And that's kinda the short version of, uh, we can provide you the detail on the slide there if anytime you wanna take a look at that. So this program I call Leading Your Board Toward Extraordinary Governance. And Bethany Fry Cook, he helped to put this together. And this first slide, um, I think is a critical one. Um, and I won't apologize for the fact that this is a tweet by MSU's basketball coach, Tom Izzo. But several years ago, he tweeted this and said teammates who work together are the tangible difference between good teams and great teams. And, and I think in a board setting, that really boils down to each of us on a board has to make that decision that we're going to contribute, that we're going to work together, that we're gonna try to make that, uh, an outstanding experience. And I should also kinda preface, this is the 15-minute version of what could be about a three-hour program. I've done it with a group of about 35 people, a lot of discussion when we get into that longer timeframe, and we did fill, uh, about three hours with it at that point. So for just a minute, think about the two or three most valued people you have ever worked with. Family, job, volunteer roles on a board. Think about who those people are. Bring a couple of names to mind. Everybody got an idea or two? See, that's nodding a little? Okay. So what was special about these people?
For me, um, well, again, nothing about. He was a mentor to me and he didn't even know it. But he was doing things that I saw were good for him, good for the organization. And I wanted to model that. And then I tried to model that. He became more aggressive to me as a person and became a mentor to me. And later when he, when he earned a lifetime award, I mentioned that he was more of a father to me in all respects than my own father was because of the things he had done for me professionally.
That's good. I like that. Anybody else? Yeah?
I had a great mentor. Uh, and it was probably in the, the late seventies, uh, when I met her. She was the vice president of a publishing company. And, um, everybody who worked under her really admired her and liked her. And everybody was always competing for her attention. Um, and she was struggling to get further up the ladder. I, I just remember that I had really no business being in the manufacturing department. Had, I did not have a degree from Western imprint management or anything that you would imagine would qualify me to be there, other than I came from the finance side of the company in the budgeting department. And I was looking at the, like, there was, we had at least, you know, anywhere from 30 to 40 million dollars budgets every year for our print. So I, I looked at that. I downloaded all of these matrices into a huge Excel spreadsheet and I was able to prove to her that we could budget from these and we could approve invoices. It would take two minutes whether watching these, these print people who didn't have a financial background trying to approve invoices. And there were 16 people in the department. So I became one of her favorites. And I learned so much from working closely with her that that has stayed with me. I've always tried to mentor, uh, people. I've found great people in my life that just needed a little encouragement. And, and to me, it was a wonderful example, especially for women.
Great. Thank you, both of you. If we had a little more time, we'd, we'd go right on down the road. But I heard a common thread there along the lines of these were people who invested in other people. They recognized the importance of their role in, in looking out for and, and helping other people improve their lives. And that's really where we're going with this. Um, often people remember those who served others well. And the word that I came on that I really like to help define our most important role is fiduciary. We tend to think of people in the investment business, insurance business, those kinds of things where they are specifically responsible for our money and, and looking out for my money rather than their interest. But I think that same principle, that duty, that ethic, and even voluntarily coming to a role on board and recognizing that it's my responsibility to take care of other people's business in their best interest, not necessarily what I think is gonna be the best thing. Oh, so to give you a little more lead in to what we're gonna talk about the rest of the few minutes here, um, this is a quote from a fellow named David Wrenz. He was the executive director of the Midwest Center for Nonprofit Leadership at the University of Missouri, Kansas City, now retired. And he said, "The research to date on board development initiatives suggests no one model is any better than any other." It's that whole idea that there's a model, a process, something that a board looks at in a systematic way to improve the work that they do. So that led me to, and I was mostly working with local governments at the time, what's the model? How do we do this? And the first one I looked closely at was way too big. It just, it wouldn't downsize to small townships, for example. As I looked at about eight models, I finally came up with my own based on principles that were in those. And that's what these 10 components of extraordinary governance are. They come from a number of other sources and they really capture what I think works across all sizes of boards, all kinds of boards. Their functions, methods, principles, culture, items. And so we'll run through those here over the next few minutes. If all you remember, if 10 is too many things, and most days, that's the case for me, it's too many to remember. If you can just take home focus on mission and resources, empowering people and building trust and excellence, those are kinda the three key categories that we're gonna talk about. So, you know, mission gives direction. And we've talked about your mission statement here. If we were, if we were spending a little bit longer on this tonight, we would spend a little time on the three questions that are there in front of you and have you talk about why is mission important? How do we write one? How do we improve the one that we have? And there's also a reference there to a paper by an organization called Board Source, Tips for Developing a Mission Statement, which is also a very good resource. So first off, mission-focused actions and impacts. Making sure that we stay true to the mission, that we measure everything we do against that mission. Second one is resources to accomplish the mission. How many of you have seen this quote? "Don't tell me your mission. Show me your budget and I will tell you your mission." No hands.
No.
Oh, a couple of head nods. Okay. I went looking for the, uh, on Google one day, went looking for the source of this and I found it credited to so many people I gave up. But I think there's a lot of truth to that. How we spend our money really indicates what's important to us. So the discussion that would go along with this one is what's your board's role with resources? Typically, the board is the one setting that budget, making those big policy decisions about how to spend money. And, and then the following questions are, do our, does our use of resources illustrate our mission? And are there improvements that we need to make or that we can make in, in this particular area? Deciding to spend resources, trying to tie them to the mission doesn't get you too far unless you monitor what you're doing, unless you have some systems to benchmark, is a popular word, monitoring, but making sure that the, the performance, the use of the finances is actually tied back to the mission and accomplishing things. And so the deeper discussion here comes around to, for you, for your city, what, what defines success? For mission, for the way you spend dollars. How do we measure those efforts? And then understanding what the data is telling you so that at the end of the day, you can look back and know what you've accomplished. Third point has to do with policy. Probably one of the most important things that I can say to any board is a reminder that it's the board's role to set policy. It's city manager, executive director, whatever that key role, and all of the rest of the staff. It's their job to then carry it out and get the job done. How many of you have ever owned your own business? One? How many have been in managerial roles? Okay, we've got a lot of those. So, and that's the case. Every time I ask those two questions of a group, I get a lot of responses. You are a roll-your-sleeves-up-get-the-job-done kind of evil. That's not what the role of a board is. Those are all of the folks that you hire and pay to get the job done. And your role on a board is to give them the direction, set the policy, point them in the right direction, give them the expectations, and then turn them loose to do the job for you.
Isn't there a final step in that too, to also make sure to get the job done or hold accountable for getting the job done, using the resources effectively?
Absolutely.
Another piece of that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Accountability at the end of the day, making sure that the job is done is.
Question really comes, who holds, it's his job more than ours to be accountable, to make him accountable. We, he's accountable to us, but they're accountable to him rather than them being accountable to us. Is a key piece of that, correct?
Precisely.
Okay.
Precisely. Yep. And, and we get into all kinds of nuances there. And if we were going a little deeper in the conversation, we would talk quite a bit more about a board's role when it comes to communication with staff. And if I'm a member of this city council, it's not my job to go give direction to a specific staff person unless somehow in the process as a board with the city manager, that's been concluded that for that particular subject, that that's the way to go. You make the overall decision, you make the assignments. That's not to say there's no communication with staff. But you really need to keep that, that chain of command in mind. If, if I'm on a board and, I'll knock it over sooner or later. And, and I'll just use Jeff as an example, cause I know Jeff. And, and Jeff is one of the staff. And, and Bill is that executive director, city manager, whatever in between us. If I'm gonna go have a conversation with Jeff because I wanna learn about what happens in his department, what kind of work are they doing? I, I just wanna understand more about what's going on. I'm gonna make sure Bill knows that I'm having that conversation and keeping that communication open so that we don't get into those problems that, and I don't know if this has ever happened in Manistee, but most boards at some point have had some issues with, with some of those kinds of, some of those kinds of things.
At the same time, staff has to keep the city manager informed if he doesn't know. Someone comes, if a city council member comes and tries to talk to the department director and didn't go through the city manager, they have an obligation to bump him an email and say, hey, by the way, so-and-so was at the office today. I think those are both sides of that same issue that could get misconstrued easily.
Yep. Clear and open communication all the way around is critically important. Key piece of all of this, um, is that whole idea of building trust and listening carefully. And, and I think we've talked about that here already, but that's, that's critically important that we make sure we listen to each other, um, we hear the ideas and where those are coming from. And back to the, kinda the policy point here, um, story I came up with years ago as an example was, actually it was a group in Lethalaw County. And, uh, and I said, so we're doing this brainstorming session and somebody says, "We need to have a Sutton's Bay International Airport." It didn't land. I thought people would land. I, my thought has always been if somebody stepped up and said, "We need an international airport in Sutton's Bay," most people would go, "That's kind of a crazy idea. We've got a pretty good airport. There's no level ground out there. Uh, where's that coming from?" And that's the key question, is to then ask, even if the, even if the policy idea sounds crazy, where did that come from? What is it that you think we would accomplish by doing that? And then listen to those ideas. And sometimes we'll find some nuggets in there that we never expected and we didn't hear when we heard that idea of an international airport. The next group is Empowering People. The words constructive partnership are in quotes because I borrowed those, stole those, well, however you wanna call it. Board Source that I mentioned earlier does a lot of work with nonprofits. That's their phrase. And there's nothing I've seen anywhere that does a better job of describing that working relationship between a board and the city manager. Board, executive director, any kind of a board situation, working together. There are some other really interesting nuances when we get into nonprofits in particular, where board members oversee, give direction to the executive director, and then come back around and serve as volunteers on projects. And there's a real need, if you ever get into that kind of a situation, if there's some kind of a project going on and the board's all gonna come in and serve as volunteers on something, kinda taking the board hat off, putting a volunteer hat on, and taking direction then from those staff who are overseeing that project. Hard to do sometimes, but critically important in keeping that chain of command straight. Uh, another key point here, um, my pastor a number of years ago on a Sunday morning introduced the full church board. A couple of new people, most of them were holdovers. And after he individually introduced them, he held his hand out and he said, "They are my boss." And I almost came out of my chair and applauded. And I went, 800 people in this room are gonna go, "What is that nut doing?" What I heard him say, and this was back when the, the pronoun "they" was pretty exclusively plural, I heard him say, "They," plural, "are my boss," singular. He didn't say bosses. He said, "This group of people works together as a single board so well, and, and they channel that communication through the board chair or, or whomever might be designated to handle that communication with me, that I understand I work for a single boss that happens to be a leader of a group of people." Tough to do some days, but I think that's one of those things that trips up a lot of boards, is when people get to feeling like they have a little more power individually. My example, when I'm talking to county government, just because I know the statutes a little better, I have challenged county commissioners for years. If you know of a place in statute where it gives specific responsibility to any one commissioner, I wanna know, cause I've never seen it. There's one. I had a, I had a commission chair come to me one day. It's, "Emergency management, there's a place here that gives that." Other than that, the legal authority for counties at least is with the entire one. And I suspect cities are pretty similar. So if we had more time, we would get into, uh, a little bit more in how we might do better in that area. And my time's about up, so I'm gonna get moving. Uh, working as one, work, having a plan to govern together is a key piece here. And this is more of that working as a single group, as a single body, kind of a thought process. Great meetings. You probably have all been in a few not so great ones. If I asked you to tell me about great ones, you, I'm sure could cite a couple. And, uh, we do have some folks who do some really good programming. If you wanted to have, um, an hour, hour and a half session, couple of hours just on improving meetings, um, we've got some folks who can do that with you. So yeah, we would ask you to describe a bad meeting and a good one, and we would talk further about how to improve ours. Responsive partnership with stakeholders is another one of the key points here. And that comes down to a board identifying who those stakeholders are. And that comes down to a board identifying who those stakeholders are, your citizens and others, and building those strong relationships. Knowing who, valuing the diversity of experience in the community, and building some ownership. And the results are the kinds of things we would talk about. The last category is building trust and excellence. The first one of these is a culture of accountability, transparency, and integrity. And that's just that being upfront with the public, making sure that folks understand what you're doing, why you're doing it, and building some trust with your citizens. And we would go deeper into some discussion about what that looks like and why it's important and how you might improve it. The last one, I call a culture of forward-thinking excellence. And I always stop and go, sometimes we can't afford the level of excellence we think we want. And that's true. We've got to live within our means. But I think as we look forward, as we set policy, as we plan, we need to be continually thinking about, what is that higher level? What is that best level that we need to aim for? So, wrap back for just a minute to that research. Following some kind of a model, some kind of a systematic approach to how you govern and to improving how you govern has proven in the research to be successful. Another thing from Dave Rens, and this was a conversation we had coming out of COVID. When we were all at that point where, are we gonna go back to doing it the way we used to? Are we gonna do it this new way that we're doing it now, since we couldn't all get together? What does the future look like? And Dave's advice was simply be flexible and be intentional. Don't get stuck in one or the other without thinking it through, being flexible to make the changes that we need to make, and then choosing the best one in an intentional fashion for some specific reason. If you're ever interested in a board self-assessment, this one's geared a little more towards nonprofits, but I think it would work with local governments as well. Takes about 20 minutes for board members to do. The initial go-round is free, which is kind of a neat thing. There's about a $300 annual fee beyond that to keep the records and to do it again. But it's a good way for board members to anonymously respond to some questions. It's all online. It compiles the data for you and gives you some really good... I've worked with one board on it. Gives you some really good sense of how you're doing as a board. Quick repeat, back to the whole idea of working together. And you have my contact information. And I think we're getting late enough. We'll dispense with the questions. And I'm gonna hand it to Mary.
Thanks, John. Some of you might not know, John leads the new county commissioner's school. So he has done four very intense programs in the last two weeks. And he stopped to get some coffee, so he's been working hard. So, Bill approached me to work with the city council to come up with sort of a quick way to set some goals for 2023. And so, in full transparency, we've developed kind of a unique program. This is not something I've done before as a facilitation tool. But parts of it certainly are, you will be familiar with. So, we're gonna spend about the next 50 minutes going through an exercise, because you are at the beginning of a new year coming up. You have some new board members, new board member. I understand. Super. Okay, congratulations. And you're in a new budget cycle. So, we all know there's always lots of priorities, many priorities. I'm sure if you could blink your eyes and get new streets and new water and a bunch of things to happen, you know, that would be a dream come true. But there's always limited time and limited funds. So, as a board, we're going to kind of go through a prioritization exercise tonight. And this is not an exercise in cutting services. I want to make that clear. The assumption is all services, everything is remaining the same. And this is really an exercise in kind of looking to the future, trends, policies, financial commitments, things like that, and where you want to put your time. So this is also kind of a short-term question. We're not, this is not a three-to-five-year master plan or that sort of thing. It's really just a way for the city manager and staff to understand where you're headed as a board and your priorities. So, why do we do this? Want to give it back to John really quick?
The idea here is to give direction to staff, basically, so that they understand your priorities. I don't think I've ever known staff and leadership in any local government unit who would look at their list of things to do and say, oh, yeah, we got this covered with time to spare. There's just always more on the list, and that's true in businesses as well. More on the list than what they really can do. So, given that reality, the fundamental question that we've come up with is, where do you want city staff to put their time and effort in 2023? That's kind of the overriding question for everything we're gonna do for the rest of the evening. What are the most important things for them to be spending their time on?
All right. Super. So, we worked with city manager Gamble to generate this worksheet and the items that you see here. So I'll take a minute to kind of orient you to the sheet. So in the center, you have that fundamental question, where do you want staff to put their time and effort? And then you'll notice some colored bubbles or circles, city beaches, housing, financial stability. These sub-areas came out of...
The strategic plan that we last had, so...
Yeah. And when was that done?
I think 2019 was the last time it was...
2019. So, there is a very detailed strategic plan that you have. And this is, this activity is something very different than that. But that's where those bubbles, so that kind of fundamental organization, came from. Underneath those bubbles, you see kind of a checkmark and two thumbs up. Everyone see that? Each one has that. Those are the commitments or obligations that have already been made. So, I'm understanding those are things that staff are working on right now.
Yep. So, and we've had our successes in the last year. We'll be doing the highlights at the next council meeting. But this is kind of a snapshot of, you know, where we're at right now. And, you know, whether it be budgeted or some things we've added over the year or some things imposed on us, like the PFAS investigation. So these are just things we're currently working on.
All right. Any questions about what that means? Pretty self-explanatory, okay? Then you'll notice that there's items with a light bulb. And each category has kind of that light bulb theme. Those are new initiatives that maybe are talked about, like, hey, maybe we should do this. Because you all secretly approach Bill and say, hey, maybe we should do this, right? Or this would be a good idea, right? Or something to that effect. But it's not something necessarily yet that's on the books for 2023. Like, yep, we're gonna do this. We have the budget. We have the time. It's gonna happen. So, as we prioritize, and I'll tell you how we're gonna do that next, those are kind of, those light bulbs are the areas where you probably want to put your priorities, because those commitments and obligations are already in the works, right? So then you'll notice that under financial stability and continuous improvement, the blue, the blue, and then sort of that yellow creamy color, city infrastructure, you'll see like a graph with an up arrow. So that's continuous improvement, what we're calling it. So those are the broad categories of infrastructure, you know, roads, city-owned buildings, water, sewer, on the city infrastructure side. And then things like the police accreditation, you know, officer to be assigned, plowing, leaf pickup, trash, brush pickup. I understand that's a big, that's a popular topic this time of year. So, what I would like to do, oh, most also importantly, you'll notice that some are in orange, right? Any guesses what orange means, what that means? It means it's particularly expensive, time-consuming, complex, or all three. It's something that requires a particularly heavy lift of staff time and effort. So, we had a scheme to come, to have like dollar signs and clocks to show lots of time. But we decided to just opt for, orange things mean it's a particularly heavy lift, multi-step process, time-consuming, or very expensive, some combination of the three. Or maybe it's politically just sort of tricky. So, that's what the orange means. So, what I would like to do is give you just a few minutes to sit with this, look at it for a second, understand, you know, I'm gonna be asking you to prioritize in just a moment. But what I want you to think about now for a second is, is there anything that's missing? Is there anything missing on this sheet that, and you can add, we're limiting it a little bit for tonight. But if you want to add one thing, because you're not seeing it on the sheet, but it's really important to you. It's possible that the city manager and myself, you know, we just missed it. I'm gonna give you a second just to sit with it. You can talk to your elbow partner if you want. This is a little bit different than a meeting. Normally, I'd have you sitting around a table, but we're staying in our official seating right now. Give you a few minutes.
Where do we put in staff development and staff, basically assessing their current weaknesses and identifying how they apply to improve what would be their weaknesses? Where'd that fit in here?
I'm thinking that might be over under the financial stability and continuous improvement in that. I'm thinking that is sort of the services bubble. And the infrastructure is more of the physical... Does that make sense?
It'd be a great year, by the way, if this came out all the time.
Can't do it all, but yeah.
It'd be a pretty kick-ass year.
It would be a kick, yeah, I agree. Does anyone have any questions, too, about something they're seeing on there? What is this?
I think there needs to be more under the... I'm just trying to figure out how this graph is put together. But more under the housing and homelessness in senior citizens. Like, there's a couple of things with the thumbs up prints in process. But there's only one light bulb thing. And making a short-term rental ordinance is not gonna solve the homelessness and housing for senior citizens. Like, that's not gonna solve anything. So I think there needs to be something different underneath there with that.
Yeah, give that some thought and kind it out.
Are you thinking, what, like zoning changes or...
Well, yeah, because, I mean, if we lighten up on our zoning regulations, we could actually have people build on these lots that we have that are vacant. But right now, they can't.
Well, we have a short-term rental ordinance idea, but have we given thought to potentially offering an incentive to people that would do year-round rentals? I mean, if they could produce three-to-four-unit rentals, are an incentivizing to give them a tax break potentially on that?
Well, I think what we're talking about is this thing in general. But I think the housing piece is a big piece. It doesn't look as big by what's on there. But I think that, you know, I think that's... We don't have anything else going on there right now.
If you would like to offer just a bullet point, just how you want to summarize that, I'm happy to add it.
I'll just say blight is under housing, homeless, the senior citizens. So we had one for long-term rental incentives would be an idea. Any other?
So long-term rentals would go under the short-term rental ordinance?
Incentives.
Long-term...
And you said zoning, some other zoning modifications or zoning?
What was the other one? So we're all clear?
Zoning changes to help spur development.
I ran into somebody who gave me a good idea about our blight problem that I thought I'd present to council at some time. And it has to do with rental inspections. Muskegon, for example, has a blight ordinance. And they're subject to annual rental inspections, which is something we don't do here with our vacant properties or vacant buildings. And they have to bring them up to code. So if they're gonna just sit there and rot, and that's not a good word, they're just gonna sit there and decline, maybe they should be in the rent, they should be inspected by our rental inspector. And even though they're not rented at the time, they have to be made ready. They have to comply with safety first.
Right. So I'm gonna put rental inspection program.
And we have that under commitments, but I'll... So I think Kevin's been doing a good job of getting us caught up on that. I'll send out. But he's been getting through a lot of them. I think that's been helpful.
Anything else? I should add, too, this is not legislation. We are, we're capturing your conversation and your moment and your intent tonight in December, on the eve of 2023, so...
Yes. Under economic development and jobs, I think there needs to be... I don't even know what you would call it. We need to figure out why businesses don't stay here. We have a huge problem with businesses opening up and then six months later, they're like, you go there and they're like, where'd they go? So...
Retention, then?
Yeah. I think there's a, there's a problem somewhere where businesses are not staying here.
Is that a role for this board? Or is that a role for...
Well, it's under, you've got economic development. I don't, I...
Maybe a business retention or just a survey about businesses that leave, what happened, what could we have done better?
Okay. So, survey of business retain, survey about?
Like an exit...
Business retention survey. How about that?
Exit survey?
Well, I think the concern, if I didn't misunderstand, is like, why are people leaving? So it's not necessarily like, how do we keep them? But it's like, if we're losing a business, asking like an exit survey. So like, if an employee leave, what's the good and bad? So I think it's the same for the business.
Exit, business exit survey?
Well, it's kind of sad if we're doing an exit survey.
I was gonna say, maybe we want to go before that.
Maybe we would want to like, approach them like while they're in business and be like, hey, are you happy here? What's going on?
Or, as an idea, do you want to, is this something you would want to have the chamber do or the economic development person do, or, you know, ask that they do this?
It seems more role-specific that way.
Yes.
Yeah.
The economic development in the chamber would be more required, go up their alley than ours. We couldn't legislate that. We couldn't make a policy to that.
But I serve on the EDC board and Jeff's the chair, so we can kind of discuss that at a meeting and, yeah, see if...
It currently has, there is a business retention business ongoing and hasn't been for a few years.
Yeah. And I think our monthly updates, they point that out. But I guess maybe seeing some feed, just what's the issues they're facing, maybe we can get more of that information.
Maybe some feedback, like the top five reasons businesses close.
Yeah.
Find out, whatever, but the top five or six reasons why they leave would be detailed. We could maybe do something with or at least.
So I'm going to put down exit slash retention survey results. If they're already doing the surveys, they just need to communicate.
Information.
You mentioned after more hardware both just closed. I have no idea why. They retired, but they're closed. I don't, you know, I mean, I don't know if they left because they couldn't sell the business, don't want to run a hardware store, no, but whatever. But they're both were very viable businesses here, and both are going to be vacant very soon. I'd be curious to know why, and if there was something we could have done. Policy-wise, it may have encouraged them not to go, or encouraged them to flip to another business rather than just go vacant.
I think that's a key part of the discussion, then what is the city's role?
Yeah, what is, is there something we could do to make it?
City's role in, somebody help me bullet point this.
Business retention?
Yeah.
What business retention? Do we have a role in business?
City's role in business retention.
I would expect the economic development of the chamber would come to us if they thought we had a role in that, and they would say, your policy on this is killing business. We've had some discussions about some of our policies have been detrimental to business. So if someone said, you know, that policy on this really caused me to pack up and leave, it would be really interesting to know.
Okay. Maybe one more thing, if you can't, something, you can't sleep at night? Can't sleep tonight if you don't get it on the board? What is it? Anything?
So I guess the one thing I'm thinking of, and maybe we already have something in place and it's just not on here. So we have citizen survey over here and the continuous improvement. But I guess I'm wondering, do we have like a staff survey? To see what the staff thinks of individual departments? I mean, they're working in those departments. I mean, citizens only know what we know, like, or what we see. And we only know what we hear and what we understand. So I'm just wondering if there's a way for staff to provide input into what they think might be beneficial or how they can make improvements in individual departments.
So an employee survey?
All right.
I, I would, in my mind, I would think that would almost have to be divided based on, like, you know, the fire department would have their own, because it would almost, some things might be consistent between departments, but some would be dependent on what the nature of the work was.
When you sit there and you think about these kinds of figures, think about the people that have come to city council and complained about events and issues. And is there things we can improve based on those complaints? For instance, our relationship with volunteers over the last couple of years seems to have eroded immensely. I think it's getting better, but I think it needs to stay getting better and we need that. I think that there are people from the city council, and they complain about things like leadership within departments. And I want to make sure that our city manager is making sure our department heads are getting the leadership skills and trained that they need. That's kind of why I talked about the self-assessment of the strength and, and I also want to make sure that the department head makes sure their staff is getting the training and skills that they need to do their jobs too. And I don't know that anybody tracks it, but it would be nice for his office at least to track it.
So could I summarize that as staff leadership skills?
Yeah, I think so. I think there's, there needs to be some assessment of what's out there and what needs to be done and if people are well with that or not.
Okay.
I, this is going to sound minor. The CRA and the Oprah district, they're not really, they're alike, they're similar, but they, they're managed differently or they're approached differently. With the CRA, which is the Commercial Rehabilitation Act, we're getting financials from developers who want to use like that. And we're usually talking about bigger buildings with, say, a hotel or something. We saw that with the Hampton Inn. We talk about Oprah, that's, that's obsolete properties. We're not asking for a performa or financial statement before small-time developer comes in here and they want to, you know, they have a dilapidated building and they want to, you know, they want to qualify for Oprah. We're not asking them for a financial statement to see that they can do the improvements, because technically they don't get the benefit of the Oprah, which is a reduction in their taxes, basically, until the work is completed. And I think we would be better off if we actually did that and made that part of the process that has to come to the city staff for review and city council. We need to see the numbers to know that these people are actually viable.
So the CRA and Oprah district, process improvements by that? Is that what you mean? Or just kind of specify that?
They're different. I, I mean, the Oprah operates where, okay, this, this property is obsolete, so we will give you a tax break. But you have to do this, this, and this improvements in the property. And they say, yeah, we can do that, but they never provide a financial state. We need to see, make sure they're actually financially sound enough to develop the property before they can take advantage of the tax break.
Well, that's, okay, so I'll let you
Yeah, and I think that could be a process improvement. So that's a, that would be under that. We don't have a process improvement on economic development and jobs, but we could say, yeah, improve vetting process for Oprah applicants. I did mention it to Mark, so I think it's on his, it's on his radar.
All right.
I got, I got one more thing.
One more?
Well, I lied, it's two more. Well, it's combined into one. But we were talking the last council meeting about the, the, the fire department and how far they go. But I, we went to the summit in Sept- September, I think it was, in the police department. They were talking about how they have to have two officers going like to different states for like mental health crises and stuff. And I see that you have, like, we have a regional drug investigator. I would, I mean, I don't know if it's ever going to happen, but I would like to see both the fire department and the police department, like, fully staffed with what they need. Like somebody, if they have like a, I don't even know if a mental health officer is a thing. I don't know if, is that a thing?
Yeah, it's considered to see, I see there's a lot of that.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, I think that that's, I mean, having them drive to another state because we don't have any facility. I mean, that kind of leaves it, like, I would just like to have them have the resources that they need, because, I mean, eventually something bad is going to happen and we're going to be short-staffed somewhere. And they're going to be like, oh, well, can't believe that happened. You know what I mean? So I don't know where to put that, but I would like to see that.
Any suggestions?
So for the police department, you're saying like if someone else could handle the transport? I know I've talked to the chief about it, but maybe that's, I don't know if it could be, we've talked about you can't really be contracted, but
There's continuous conversations, I mean, obviously, I know how, but it was trying to find a model. I mean, the easy thing is just get a hundred-bed psychiatric facility to really help us out. But so there's continued conversations at the top of these organizations to figure out how can we impact this? Because the direct, the rate we're going now has some significant sustainability issues. So there are those conversations between the chair, myself, and Karen Goodman, and various organizations to figure out, but we got to figure something out, and so we have to continue to have these conversations. And I think that's going to be the trend, it's not just a funny, I think that's the trend.
So I think, you know, I think it does, and I think we could put on here, improve police department mental, mental health transports, whatever that's can be, if it can be contracted, if it can be a, you know, one police officer and a social worker. I'm not, yeah, so we're still looking into that, but that's, that can be under there. It's a good one.
So I'm going to do police department mental health transports under recycling. That's going to be
I think you already have fire
It could be under intergovernmental projects.
Okay.
Because we can maybe
Oh, intergovernmental, okay. Okay. Now, John, I want you to help me out. So I want to have one of these and one orange. Okay, now for the fun, the really fun part of the evening. We're going to do what's called, it's spend a buck, the spend a buck activity. So I know you've all done sticky dots and all of that, but spend a, spend a buck is just kind of a fun twist on it. So before you, you're going to have, you're going to get five dimes, five nickels, and one orange quarter that, that symbolize, or kind of an analogy for where you would put your priorities. Understanding we have limited time, limited, limited money. And there's two simple rules. So I don't want you to think about the stickers and where you're going to put the stickers, because you're going to put the stickers actually over here on our, on our walls. And we're going to make sure that the priorities that you just added are over there on the wall. So what I want you to do is mark up your, your worksheet for now in thinking about how you would spend your dollar in 2023. And so you can put, you know, just mark it up now. You know, I'm going to put my quarter here. And notice that the quarter is orange and the really hard, complex, heavy lift, expensive, whatever, those items are orange also. So minimum entry on the orange items is a quarter. Does that make sense?
I have a clarifying question.
Okay.
So are we putting our money on the individual item or in the area?
On the individual items.
Okay.
Oh, not the Yep, the individual items. I know, it's hard. That's a great question. Now, I don't want any of you to put your money on the current obligations, the ones with the thumbs up, with the check marks. Don't vote for those, all right? Because those are already happening. We're kind of, we're focusing now on those, either the continuous improvements or those new initiatives with the light bulb. Okay? The other rule that I have is that you can't spend more than 25 cents on any one item. Okay? I don't want you putting your whole dollar, trying to rig the system. I don't know if you can work with each other to try to rig the system. I haven't really thought through that. But that's, that the idea is don't, don't load it up, not more than 25 cents on one priority.
One item got a ton of dollars. Does that mean that our budget has to go
No.
That ton of dollars?
This is an analogy, this is an analogy of where you want to put your time and effort. This is not a budget meeting in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, so we're just picking the ones with the light bulbs then, right? We're putting our money with the light
The light bulbs or the graph with the continuous up arrow?
God, okay.
Yeah.
I don't like this game.
So I'm going to give them
I think they're getting the idea that there's not quite enough time and money to go around.
I would like to write down.
I'm going to give you several minutes to pick that up. Do you have an extra one? Yeah, yeah, and I'm going to add
Um, no, you could, you could put one on. You can't spend more than 25.
So quick retention check?
Staff training, development.
How much money, what's the maximum you can spend on any one item?
Twenty-five.
Top five reasons like businesses leave, exit surveys. Improve vetting process for Oprah.
The mental health transport? Is this the only part that you want to go?
It's like this, but we don't have that.
That's what I thought, okay.
Okay. Do I have to spend my whole dollar? I guess not.
Can I borrow some?
We'll get out of this for about 50 cents.
It's kind of hard. This doesn't make sense. So these are bullets underneath this one, but this is for 25 bucks, sounds pros. What, I don't get this. Does that make sense to you? It's got a question mark by it.
Oh, because it's freaking, it's down
Damn it, I did it wrong. Wait. Does it make sense to me?
Hey.
What's the Frackonos conversion talking about there? What, what is that referencing?
It's the, selling that, selling that area for that deck. And then we need to, we have, but we, it's, it's going to involve us giving that large amount of property and then modifying our, you know, Park's master plan and then doing a yellow book assessment. It's going to, it's a, it's a bigger task than just selling it to them.
Some of that though, have we not?
We, you guys, I think before I got here, there was a purchase agreement that wasn't executed and we didn't execute it.
Okay.
Right.
And Frackon, Ted Frackon agreed to kind of wait on it, because that, we lose 50 points. And it doesn't look like we got the land and water this time. Or I'm sorry, it doesn't look like we got the trust fund grant for the North River Walk. But any, if when we do sell it, it's going to trigger a conversion, which is going to subtract 50 points from our grant application until it's completed.
Okay, thank you.
So when you're done, I'd like you to go put your stickers over on the corresponding wall. You'll see that the colors match exactly what you have. And we've added those new items to under those headers. So I'll, I'll guide you how to
Can I take my sheet?
Yeah, take your sheet with you.
You're done.
And you don't forget your stickers. So you can put your stickers to the right? Or, oh, not, not so far.
I need specific direction here.
I know. Your turn is that.
Oh, I didn't put it on one thing. I thought it was the whole
Oh, no, you got one. So one sticker per item. It's not a whole, a whole grouping.
No, it's not, like I can't put 20 cents on something.
So can I put it here? Yeah.
Can I put anywhere on 25 cents?
Yep. Well, but that, that would be wrote on.
It's like two days right before, I don't know, we're going to have this work. And then we came, she came up with this.
And for the business retention survey, they said they wanted to feed them.
So they wanted that exit survey on reasons they left.
And then how the city can, how the city can help retain. Yeah, so based on feedback from banks, what could the city do?
But they love the feedback coming from the chamber?
Yeah, I would think so. So we'll send that to Mark. I think that's, I'll send that to Mark.
If I have something left over, I'll stick it on something.
Make sure your fans put it in line with your priority. Just right here. Yeah. Bill?
Yeah.
The question on modified protective covenants.
It wasn't as difficult than I thought it was gonna be. I think you need to take notes for me. I have good handwriting. I write like a serial killer.
I can't even read it half the time. Yeah, yeah. I used to, I used to have really good penmanship when I happened. I think I have arthritis in my hand or something.
This was just staff training.
Nope.
Yeah, staff training development within this relationship. Do I say that way? Okay, I gotta. Thank you. I got it.
Did you guys get the paste them up then?
No. This is, this is council. Yeah, I have to do that.
If I've been here, I'll be.
I know, it's deja vu.
Okay, yeah.
Second Tuesday. Three hour condition.
This could get all over again. Yeah, until like 5 o'clock, then we're like, oh.
Yeah, that's when we needed those meetings.
Okay, the meeting is done. All right, next, in a lightning round, literally, you're gonna have one minute each to just teleboard your reasoning, what your thoughts were, why you voted the way you did. And we're going to thank you.
And I'm not normally a woman, but I will be when it goes off, you're done.
You're done. So we just wanna give you the chance to say, this is how I voted, because notice your names aren't on those stickers.
I know.
So, so just an opportunity to share how. Would you like to start?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, why I voted for, you want me to name the issue or not necessary?
However you wanna do it.
Why I voted, I know we've got for railroad, we wanna remove the railroad track, it goes some other way. And I know that's gonna be expensive, it's 30, 40 million dollars. And so I voted for that, that we can use the land after we remove it. It's gonna be a long process to do that. I voted for police and fire because I was on the department, so I know what it is. And it's always an expense. I think if you try to put a policeman and a fireman in an ambulance, or you try to get a mental health worker, if you haven't ever tried to get a mental health worker at night, you'll hold your back end because it's gonna take you hours to get somebody down most of the time, unless they put somebody in manatee. So that's another issue that's gonna be very intensive.
All right, time's up. Thank you. Seth?
All right, I put my money, a majority of my money on the staff surveys, citizen surveys, and professional development, because I think that's where we're gonna get the most return for our money. Be able to get some data that we can actually action around. I put money on housing because I know that's a large area of concern in the county and I think we have to look at what we can do to help that. I put my money on the Sands Park tennis courts because I know that's been a large area of concern with citizens. And then I put money on mental health within the police department. Just because of my line of work, I know that that's a large area of concern and that's only going to continue to grow. So I think if we can look at ways to improve that, that'd be great. And then I just put the remaining money I had on concerns that citizens have brought to our attention on numerous occasions.
Done with eight seconds to spare.
Ready? Okay, I put my money on roads. That's an obvious given. Business retention because I think that it's needed. Police department for the mental health. Zoning ordinance for, for building because we need to look at our zoning ordinances so we can build on some of these vacant lots. The fire EMS, mutual aid, I put money there. I also put money, I went to the police department, I also put money at the restrooms at the Lyons Pavilion. I think that is needed. And I believe I put money on the rare relocation. Because all of it's needed, so that's what I did.
I had a hard time deciding where to put the 25 cents.
I know that we are in desperate need of housing and I know that we are in desperate need of jobs, filling jobs and getting people working and getting businesses having employees. But none of those actually were things that I could really put money on. So knowing that that was, I was having a hard time moving around from there. I did put money in roads because I think that benefits everyone in our community and we do have some roads that are really horrendous. I put some money towards the city beaches and parks, the marina improvement and the Lyons Pavilion bathrooms. I also put money towards the zoning adjustments for long-term, short-term rental housing situation. And where else did I put money? I'm not sure where else I put money.
Time's up.
Me? Okay. I put money on police accreditation officers to be assigned to regional drug investigations. I put money on recycling. I put money on blight demolitions and rental inspections. I have my 25 cents I spent at the restrooms at Lyons Pavilion. And Fifth Avenue beach wall is very important. We promised that for a long time and they'll get it. So also, I put money on fire EMS improvement, mutual aid, and water and sewer rate study and the Ramsdale improvements.
I put my 25 cents on the fire EMS improvement with mutual aid. I put money, my dime, I didn't, I could talk about my nickels here today, roads. I put money on the water sewer rate study, which I think impacted every citizen here. And we get people up here all the time complaining how hard it is done, what hardship it is. And if we can soften that blow, that'd be great. I put 10 cents on the Manatee Proud collaboration and the arena improvement because that is a big issue here. Zoning is important for me as well and make sure that our zoning is friendly to businesses and such as that. And also the protective covenants were important to me. A lot of the nickels, but we're not gonna talk about those.
All right.
They did agree to that.
They did. So I'm wondering if you all, I was, we were just kinda, kinda debrief here, but do you wanna do it back there so you can kinda see? See this, see the results of this?
Don't move your eyes.
I'm sorry.
So do you see some trends? Improving mutual aid looks pretty strong. Roads with a couple of quarters is a very strong one. Police accreditation.
If I had a different one, because that's already a prior, police accreditation, I won't stop. I don't like that.
Yeah.
I think that would be something that I think you talked about.
Well, you're right, we're right, almost, it's like being a bad week. We're in progress.
A number, a number of vote, there's smaller, smaller coin values, but a number of the lung changes and the long-term. And the restrooms adds up pretty well with that quarter.
Anything surprising, anything jumping out of it?
Well, some of the things are somewhat of a, well, it's quite a bonus, but because they're all measured, they're based on, they're essentially. And the engineering company, they get that back to us, they, they pretty much tell us what needs to happen now. Then it's gonna be, we can't petition it. And they, the president was great to me, but it takes a long time and I can't do them all at once. I've been on council, it's my idea. I gotta tell you, 2nd Street, we're just now starting. So I don't wanna think that it's all like that throughout the city, but I'm afraid that that's a bit of a tragedy to have to be patient. Unless we take money out of oil and gas like this, you know, there's a big deal.
There's some taxes.
No, we discussed it, it's not over, we're over it yet. It'll all jump out and it's the same way.
It's a competing, we're not gonna fix that here. That's gonna take a collaborative effort from several places. I guess we need to be stable, but we're not gonna fix that at the same time. Well, I guess once we give them six more guys, it's gonna make it a loss, we only take four of them, I believe.
But it still gives them pretty good direction in the data. Collaborative investor, you really wanna be a market.
Yeah, we might be able to act a small piece of that, a small fix in some way.
I understand how many city staff to spend their time, so it's not necessarily us. But for me, think.
Someone put their money on other ideas.
I thought citizen survey might get more.
Somebody put their quarter on ideas for another time.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say.
Who was that?
I told her mine.
Please got some ideas.
But you did just comment about thinking that the citizen survey might have come up.
I thought more of us would've thought citizen survey was a part. We, if you just think of our basic job, we sort of citizens, I don't want, how I want, how I'm gonna serve, right? Citizen survey would give us really good, I remember the last time we did one, it was really, really good information came out. And some process changes came out.
Well, I put my quarter there because I feel like that's a type of, uh... So that's something I think is pretty actionable compared to, not saying that some of these other items are actionable, but some of it financially may not make sense. Those surveys are pretty easy to do. It's just time.
Anything else that surprised anyone that it wasn't?
I thought they might have, yeah, I mean, water rate, but I only got, I only got three. That's a hot one, make sure I read, keep it short.
Well, you know, if you gave us another challenge, we could.
I know. I almost gave you a dollar fifteen because of inflation, but I decided not to. It would've made a huge difference.
No, I don't know.
Isn't that the story of, does the city council give us a little more money?
All right, so next step, as you're, I mean, going back to your seats, I know you all have, you have another discussion to be had here in the last half hour. I believe it's about 1,000.
No, that was, that was changed.
Oh, that was changed?
Yeah, we don't have that.
Oh, I'm watching.
All right. So I guess we have a little more time.
I didn't realize this was coming.
So we have a little more time. Get done at 8:20 and your minds come out.
Yeah, we end up.
Do you wanna do it?
Thank you.
What do you want?
Oh, okay. Some of John's ideas, if they thought maybe diving more into that or that.
So we are going to, we're going to close out this portion of the activity. And again, we're just capturing a conversation, maybe it's going to, you know, I'm hoping it'll help to kind of bring your focus in a little bit. At least you'll know what each other's thinking without a painstaking conversation about each item. So that might help you going into next year. I will kind of type this up and make it into a nicer visual format for you to refer to.
Good.
Later on, as you get more involved in your policy work. And if there's a, we do have a little bit of extra time. So John, if there, if you wanted to ask John or have any more conversations about the beginning, the beginning slideshow on the, for your board or boards. We could kind of have a little more Q and A or discussion. Board roles or board staff, or we can say anything like that.
Like right now?
Yeah, I'll just open that up, because we do have a little more.
We did a good job of, of starting to clarify, and I think that's somewhat of an issue sometimes with boards, and particularly the city council. And I appreciate you bringing that up and putting it out. I'm not sure if, you know, if you're not, but one of the things that I saw happen online was, was a council member, I was a department head here personally. Would come to the department and say, man, what's your opinion on the city manager or this other guy? And they're looking for, they're looking for, looking for dirt, and they're looking to rub the wound a little bit. And it puts you as a, as a department director and employee in a delicate spot, because the council thinks they're trusting you to give them some confidential information. But ethically, you have to tell the city manager that person was in here and was looking for dirt on you or me or whoever. And I think a lot of times, employees and people don't pass that up the chain. And it leaves the city manager sometimes surprised if there are things going on he doesn't know about. So I think that that message has to be reinforced for the department heads, that if someone shows up in your office and I don't know about in advance, you need to let me know. They need to tell the city manager that that's happening. And I'm not sure that all department heads understand that, and all employees actually understand that, that that has to flow both directions. It's not, no city employee should be loyal to one city council member. They should be loyal to the boss, and they need to keep that information going. And basically, what happens, you find people without jobs, surprisingly without jobs. So just to, I think they need to know it's safe to do that, and it's, it is smart.
That's a great point.
And councils shouldn't expect that to be confidential either, I guess, is part of that point. You, you shouldn't go there thinking whisper in somebody's ear, and it's not going to get back. It's going to get back.
Yeah. There just needs to be that open communication around the whole, the whole city, all the way through. Avoiding the surprise, and it, it really goes back to that teamwork. If we're all working together as one, trying to work together to accomplish what we can for the citizens of the city.
We had emails this week just reinforcing that we don't talk together. We don't email the whole group and say X. We don't do that. I mean, and that basically my job, and I want to tell the city councils something, is I tell the city manager, and he decides then, if the whole city council should. And I can't, I don't even know if I could tell him, make sure you tell both city council. I think I have to trust him to evaluate the information, determine the whole city council needs to be informed. By for going career development, by keep everybody informed, but, but it's not my job or our job to email blasts the whole city council, let us know what you're thinking, if you want to talk. I mean, it just, that conversation to us doesn't go ah, it goes bing, bing, and back and forth.
I've heard Matt Nordfjord from Cold Stone and Toski offer four times in the last two weeks, talk about open meetings act. And, and that's, that gets right to that edge of if you're sending it to everybody and if anybody buys all, then you're into deliberation on some of the meeting. So that's another concern.
Well, and our attorney has reinforced that a couple of times in, over the years, and again, most recently, but it just needs to be reinforced often, I think. That we got to be careful with that, because it is a criminal offense to give pop for a means act, so.
Questions, comments? Anything else for either?
Thank you for your time, and we'll, we'll get the results too, and hopefully they'll be useful for you, and you come into next year and, and very importantly, useful to staff.
Thank you, everyone, for your time, and thank you, Mary and John. Appreciate your time.
Go to other, or do we do that?
I'm just, I, I really appreciate everyone's participation today, and I just, I guess, if you look at the mission and goals, obviously, you're bombarded with a lot of information. If there's something missing on here too, but I thought, you know, this is something we could do every year in December, maybe prepping. Think about over the holiday, then we kind of kick it off with the budget, and we have the state of the streets. So I guess just think about the process. At other places, so strategic planning can be Saturdays, we could do a longer session, we can. But I thought this was kind of a good way to just kind of, at least, kind of test it out, just, and I really appreciate you packing it down. Because I think the biggest thing was, they kept telling me, these could be all day, a three-hour event. I thought they did a great job with the graphic, and we kind of really tried to figure out how to put a lot of information in here. And I thought, I really appreciate Mary's time, but.
It was very helpful.
I, I thought it was, it's a big sheet of paper that you guys worked on. It was great. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. And we kept some dots. I know I didn't get everything, so appreciate you guys filling in some things as well, so.
Alice? No? No?
All good.
Take a motion to adjourn? Motion.